Evening everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Darren Carlucci is not here. Becky Cooper?
Is here.
June Donenfeld?
Here.
I'm Emile Lugash. Mary Ann Santos?
Is here.
Jen Rivera is here. Christine?
Yep.
Todd?
Yep.
Well, I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and one with all. Are there any agenda adjustments?
Other than I had on the initial one, it said call the meeting order at 6:30. We'll do it at 5:30 instead.
Oh, yeah.
That was a cut and paste.
I'd like to open for public comment. Any public comments? Speak now or forever hold your peace. I mean it.
Yeah.
And we have a presentation.
Presentation. Deputy Solo, he's our presentation today. That's why he's here, Chuck. That's why he's here.
My name is Scott Solo from the deputy sheriff's office. And I've asked Todd if I could be here as superintendent, just to introduce myself and just let you know a little bit about what I do, the position that the sheriff and the chief created in March of 2024. So I've been a police officer for about 17 years, 15 of those I was in Rockland, but I've been with sheriff's office staff for years. The sheriff and the chief created the position of community resource deputy. And so what entails is along with working just in the community, where quite a few different paths, but I'm responsible for each different school to include this one. And so I get the opportunity to be in and out of the schools, to work with the staff with sometimes just issues that come up, but most of the time I'm just coming in just to say hi, just to have a presence. One of the things that the sheriff, he wanted to do was just build relationships, start relationships between the sheriff's office and schools, community as a whole. But he also just wanted the sheriff's office to be seen in a different light. You can see that I'm wearing kind of casual, you know, this is my uniform, so it's kind of what I wear every day, not the brown that we normally do. I would say that the principal and the assistant principal would agree with superintendent that it's been a little bit better of a presentation for students and staff. I think it has been real positive, but again, I, you know, hats off to the sheriff for kind of this forward thinking. Some of the things that I'm involved with is I've had some training in what we call policing the teen brain, which is kind of understanding how the teen brain works aside from adults. I'm also crisis intervention training that I've had, I've had that with both adults and children, so there's a different aspect that we have training for, you know, school age individuals. I've had training in what we call C-Tag, which is a school threat assessment that the school uses here, actually all of our schools do. It's an important tool that we can use sometimes to just try to assess threats that may be, you know, towards the school. Along with that, again, I did ask for this superintendent if I could be here just to introduce myself, but I really want to talk to you about your staff that you have here. The principal, assistant principal are outstanding. I have the opportunity to come in here and be here again with situations, the times that they've asked for some guidance from the sheriff's office, they've really been on target. And so I just wanted to let you know, your staff that you have here is pretty outstanding. They do an outstanding job day to day. They do, they care about these kids. They treat them like they're their own kids. I think you should be fortunate to have the staff that you do with the leadership that you do. And, you know, again, some of the things that the sheriff's office brings is it is a sense of safety, but we're also looking at putting in safety, just implements, you know, for keeping our schools safe. And I could tell you, this school here absolutely, you know, if you don't have your card, if they don't know you, you're not getting in. They do a wonderful job here for protecting these kids and dealing with some of the issues that they're, you know, that they have to deal with. They do an outstanding job. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize the staff that's here. If anybody has any questions for me available.
Any questions, anybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to take some minutes. Motion to approve?
I make a motion. We accept the minutes.
Second? All in favor? And moving right along. Chair's report. Oh, the next regular meeting, oh, okay. Will be to be determined.
I'm going to talk to you about that.
Okay. Oh, I remember that. Bristol Budget Workshop will be on Tuesday, January 7th at the Central Office.
Starting at 8:30.
Starting at 8:30. And the next meeting of the AOS board will be on January 8th at the Noble Borough Central School. And the AOS 93 report, June Donenfeld.
I don't know how many of you were present at the public debate for the AOS budget recently, but regrettably, which was high, which meant that it did not pass. So it's, we go, we meaning the various AOS reps, and Peter and Todd will reconvene to discuss the budget next week and see what kind of revisions might be made. That's it.
Thank you.
Can I ask where that is available? Is that publicly available?
It's a public meeting. You, I mean, you're welcome.
I'm in the budget document.
You mean the one that was presented at the most recent one? Yeah, it's a public document.
Yeah. Peter, is that, is that public, is that online somewhere?
I'm just getting it the way it's right now. It's not going to be, they're going to change it next week.
Right, so the one that got moved again.
Yes. Yep.
I know when they posted it before the meeting, I stress, I'm version coding. FYI, I will look at that.
Okay.
It was posted before the meeting. What's the difference between the meeting on the 22nd, which is called budget meeting?
That's when it'll have go vote again to the voters. That's the, that's the voting meeting.
Now, Peter said in the article that was in the paper, that it was going to be open conversation at each meeting, not typical meeting, which I've cut out, I'm not on our now public comments, but.
Yes, you are.
But I'll rise for point of order because if you have a conflict with what Lincoln County News said, meeting on the 8th was going to be the open to the public.
It is, it's a board meeting.
And for public discussion, not, not the typical board meeting, which is what it's supposed to be. I read the content paper, but I know, but that's been changed now that meeting on the 22nd. So what's the, what's difference between 22nd and the 8th? The 8th is your board working meeting, open to the public.
It's a board meeting.
Without public, without public comment.
We always have public comment at board meetings.
You don't get comments upfront discussion, if that's the correct word I can use.
And I think did the AOS board add public comment after as well? I know one of my boards added a comment later in their meeting as well.
I don't remember.
I can't remember them. We can certainly do that.
Well, the point being, I'm trying to clear out what the, what the Lincoln County News reported in an interview, not from a meeting, but either after meeting with Peter, saying that the meeting on the 8th was to be determined where, you know, but it was to open for public discussion.
Lincoln County News does not say that, Chuck, I'll read to you. Nielsen said the board will try to hold a meeting in a space that will accommodate a large number of attendees in the event anyone would like to listen or ask questions about the budget process.
Well, we can help ask questions. Ask questions, public, as public speaker. I'm asking questions now.
And I'm, 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 so to speak. I can't speak for why Lincoln County News wrote that sentence, but it doesn't say that we're in a big discussion. It says so the public can listen or ask questions.
Again, ask question. Can you ask question?
You're asking a lot of questions right now, Chuck. Yeah, you can ask questions.
At that meeting. I mean, you're not going to get him, he's talking at the, at the multiple there that's, and I don't, the only person I'm at place here, I'm able to talk legally, I guess, is on the public comment.
Chuck, in the three years I've been here, no one's ever shut you down.
I'll argue with that. So in the meeting on the, in the meeting on the 8th, will anybody in attendance from the public be able to address the chair or just the speaker, I guess it's just me.
There'll be public comment. I mean, all I can tell you is there'll be public comment, yes.
But not under that Spartan agenda, the current agenda, we don't have public comment. Now I'm supposed to listen, just shut it up and see if you're not heard.
There'll be public comment. I can't make anything clearer than that.
Public comment discussion, breaking the word discussion. Can I interject? Can I address the chair at any time?
No. During public comment, you can ask whatever questions you may have. And then the board will.
Before the meeting stops.
And then we'll, if we can adjust the agenda and have a public comment after, if you'd like to make some comments after, we could do that.
So the interpretation that the Lincoln County News had is different, than what I'm saying.
Does the AOS board follow the same rules at a school board?
Yep.
So there can be public comment, this is not a meeting of the public.
They can leave all the comment anywhere throughout your, throughout your.
Yeah, but they can make their comments when comments are called for.
Yeah.
But otherwise, no.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's, that's, like this meeting is supposed to run.
That's right. And that's a state law.
No.
Yes, it is. It's a Supreme Court decision from 1924, and it still, and it still holds.
So the, so it's not, the meeting on the 8th is where, once upon the agenda of public comment, it's not open.
It is not an open.
Public discussion adds to the, I gotta get, get Lincoln County News to square this in a way.
I don't care what the Lincoln County News says. The Lincoln.
I do.
Well, go ahead.
I don't read the, I don't.
Excuse me. Go speak to the Lincoln County News, but the law says that it is a meeting that the public may attend, that we can hold, we can open it for, for public comment when it is closed, when that time is closed, it is closed. It is not a, a public meeting.
Public discussion.
There are, there are public discussion, it's not. Do you want to hear the law?
Just tell me, just give me a reference so I can find it.
Oh, sure. Yeah. It's, um.
Yeah, I can, I can get it for you. And then we'll move on. Shaw versus Small, 124 Maine, 3641, 1924.
Shaw versus Maine?
Versus Small.
Shaw.
Shaw versus Small, S-M-A-L-L, 124 Maine, 3641, 1924.
Do you do that date again? There's a bunch of numbers there. 124.
Moving on. Yes. Superintendent's report, please.
Yeah. So obviously we had the break at the end of December, so there wasn't a lot of weeks there, but dig it out and do a variety of things. On December 9th, I attended the Midcoast Regional Curriculum Director and Coordinators Meeting that was held in Rockland. On December 17th, I got to see the South Bristol School and the Bristol Consolidated School Concert that was held over at South Bristol. December 18th, obviously we had the AOS Public Budget Meeting that was just mentioned. On December 19th, I attended the Midcoast Superintendent's Association Meeting, which was held at Morris High School, and that gave me the opportunity to actually go and get a tour of Bath Regional Career and Technical Center, and that's quite a facility they've got over there, so certainly.
Is that on the hill as you're leaving?
Oh, yeah. It's a, it's a castle on the hill. Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It is. And then December 20th, I attended the Capital Area Technical Center Meeting, which we Jefferson kids more will go there than our kids, so. But those, that's what I've done since our last board meeting. Oh, that's some of the things above and beyond that I've done since our last board meeting. Yeah.
Does the technical tool down in Bath, do they now cover clean energy type training?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but they're more than willing to answer any questions. They told me to just have people reach out. And their website, you can check their website out, too.
The state has set aside some.
And it's, it's set up interesting because unlike traditional tech centers that you may think of, there's a section of a building that's the whole tech center. These are actually sprinkled throughout the, the content classes throughout the building.
Oh, cool.
So it's, it's, so kids walking by from class to class can actually look in and see, you know, cosmetology going on or something like that.
Any other questions? Principals report.
So, like I said, vacation ended in Rockland. It was fun, I didn't make it to the drive. Thank you, but.
If you send that, we can get it added. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I feel like it was just yesterday we were recording December.
Thank you.
So, you know, highlights, as Todd shared, the two, part of our stuff for this, we enjoyed downtown Bristol. And we had a Bristol pre-K that five concert we performed, and both were boring successes, I mean, both thoroughly the kids, really good time, but I think what's fun for me, and I think for most of the people attending, is the sense of community, we're glad, we're festive, we're happy, we're well. We get to see everybody's bright, happy, free holiday side, which is nice. And the cookie sale, we had to move the eighth grade fundraisers into the art room, and I think it was a really great idea. It was, you know, born out of necessity because of the way that the lobby's, uh, continues now, but it did get paid for better sales and better ambiance, and it can raise over $800. It's huge. So anyways, it gave us, we, a lot of people donated cookies, and like the amount, it was very impressive, so I think it was a record record.
Do you have any of June's cookies there? No? About $900 worth of sales then.
That's what the eighth grader's, the eighth grade event. That was, that was fun. And, you know, and when we, that and the carnival, they really have their hands in, and they're responsible for that part of the fundraising to some degree, whereas the bottle shed was really, you know, heavy lifting for that. So I like these events because it really does give them that sense of service.
Right.
That, you know, that, so, really nice. Yeah, the concerts were wonderful, this, you know, the sixth through eighth graders were performing over at the South Bristol event. We didn't have a group, we went back and forth, at least the principal, myself, and Caitlin, what's the best way to do this, to have the kids perform twice at both concerts, the, to one or the other, and we decided to try it this way. So hopefully, the next concert this year for the middle round of kids will act as the host of our church, so to speak, just to make the convenience for our families to kind of share that piece. But after watching the level of commitment to family, I think the college could have done those, or the public that might have been a string of parties, we have two different notes that put those strings in. Because the concerts are long, so it wasn't just band chairs. The only other events that, you know, are, are keeping us busy in addition to the project, the home community reader, is basketball and cheerleading. We have a lot of, you know, boys' teams, girls' teams for basketball, and then a poet cheering squad, and it's been great. The level of interest and excitement and participation, very positive. So this, you are looking at the cheerleading practice room at the moment, we are sharing it with them. So we, when the cafeteria is ready, that would be a lovely space to have a cheerleading practice, unfortunately. Instruction and programming, report cards went home the end of the first week in December. As I mentioned, I believe at the beginning of the year, we decided to switch over to more of a traditional grade scale for grades six, seven, eight to the report cards. So this, kids in those grades got A's, B's, C's on the report card itself, and in power school, kids were able to access their progress based on the different assignments and facts of the grade within. The feedback we received, the staff felt it went very well. The parents that they interacted with had a lot of positives about really having a better pulse on where the kids stand. And the students themselves, we noticed a lot more engagement, especially as the second half of the trimester kind of rolled around, truly understanding the impact of things that they do score as well on. Because in the past, it's a standard space, but the cards are like to wrap their heads around, is when a standard encompasses year-long targets, and we give them feedback in the fall, a one or a two means you're making progress on a four-point scale. But a one or a two could mean that you're not doing well at all. And hard for a kid to see a one in one context to realize it might be concerning, and a one in the other context means you haven't had access enough yet. And I, I, you know, there's a place for that kind of feedback, but I think on the report card, it never really seems to take hold well enough. And part of that's on the educational institutions not doing their, you know, enough outreach, but I think it has to be a broader culture than a small school to have that. Back in the day, I think we were working at, you know, we, we thought the whole state was requiring, from the high school down, a standard-based system, which would have had more, more understanding at all levels from everyone using it, and that never actually happened. One of those things that the office could be mandating sort of fizz over time. So we still have standards-based reference, construction standards, reference assessing going on, but the reporting system itself is listing for those case, those scores. And we'll see how it goes, but it was, I think, so far, so good.
And teachers can still do a conversion, so they could use some standards.
Yes.
In their classroom, convert that by.
I feel like the writing assignments may still have a lot of rubrics of a four-point scale and other kinds of things, but they, to do the conversion, the directions where you're ending up with a letter grade is, is not ruining the system, whereas when you almost turn a standard into a letter number, it doesn't, it really takes away the impact of how this in communicates. So I think there's a happy medium somewhere of using both systems, but you have to kind of take the leap. So I would say folks felt, it was, it was well received. I will do, put some follow-up communication with families because we didn't put a lot out there, not knowing how it was going to turn out, you know, and so. So that was the big change, and, you know, so the positive was I didn't get anything specific negative, and mostly some folks getting to get the teachers, so they felt better about who you're seeing from the kids. So in terms of student resilience and our community setting, within the school, one of the highlights that I've been enjoying this year in the different places, that teachers across the grades and contact areas are partnering with, you know, getting their kids involved in different levels. And right now, our first and third graders get together weekly because the third graders are our CSOW platform experts, and they're helping teach their first grade buddies how to, you know, do activities on CSOW, and also post information that can be sent home to their parents. So that's been great for the adults as well, for the students. And I mentioned, we have a flex block. At the end of the day, it's our old activity period, we call it flex period, activity period. And one day a week, they chosen activities, and then multiple groups of students, and they're placed based on their interests. Someone sees this kid where they think they're being liked, so that group's been working with the primary classrooms, doing activities, kind of, have been a positive. And then our third, fourth, and fifth grade continues to do community meetings monthly, where they'll gather them here and discuss, you know, I remember they shared a lot about their shared recess and lunchroom expectations earlier this year. They have positive highlights, so it's a chance for those kids to kind of have this sense of belonging, something bigger without gathering all 200 students in the gym, so. True positive examples of, of that community. And then another cool thing that's happening, or it's happening in conjunction with South Bristol, they'll be, Jason Loggion, a little science teacher, reached out to educate Maine. They have a, what they call bio lab, it's, it's what it sounds like, but it sounds like it's also an activity, and it's basically. That's the, the lesser outcome. So our kids will go over to South Bristol the week of the 13th, and one grade level at a time, we'll be doing, it's biology-related activities. Scientists with the program have different modules that kids will be involved with, you know, from some more chemistry-oriented, some a bit more environmental science-oriented, and there's a sixth, actually fifth grades through eighth that are participating in different ages, and so they'll get to be with each other, each kid at the same time. So it's cool, we'll plus go over, they'll have some learning with, you know, somebody other than their science teacher, which this crap will be there, they might get this, this, this actually what they do with fifth graders, but there's something about the, the real scientist person showing up and modeling the tools they use, and the extra piece that has an impact, you know. Looking forward to that opportunity for our kids. It's a moment similar, we have, you know, kind of switched schools and moved, but we also had, you know, six to move in this last month or so, so.
That's all you? Thank you.
Pardon me for one second. Is it too late, according to your book? I have thought of a question for a deputy solist, I don't know, can I go back to that?
Yeah.
Just a simple question.
Yes, of course.
Sorry, I'm so slow to think of it. How often are, are you here at Bristol on a regular basis?
Not enough. Is, is a short answer, yeah. I, because I have eight schools, there are times, there are weeks that, again, I cover schools from Jefferson to Dresden to South Bristol, so again, full of eight schools. There are times, we also do dining with the deputies, with, which is still a uniform deputy that comes in, but there's a lot of times, too, when I come in, when I just go into the lunchroom and, and hang out. But again, short answer, not enough. I try as best, superintendent has seen me at other schools, assistant principal, you know, we've been at other schools, and see, there's times that I'm called to go to schools to deal with the situation, and then there's better times when I like just coming in and stopping in. And, and again, to tell you, none of that would be possible without the superintendent, without the principal and assistant principal giving me that welcome back. They have absolutely done that. So my goal is, I mean, if I could spend more time, I absolutely would, but again, not enough time. I wish there was more, I wish there was more, that's all I was.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you.
And I do want to echo the, the importance of him just doing pop-in visits, because unfortunately, if he's only showing up when there's an issue.
Right.
A lot of times, that's the only interaction that, that schools have had with, or students have had with law enforcement.
Right.
In their home setting, perhaps, which is unfortunate that, yes, we're happy to have what we have, it would be great if we had more time, because we don't want him just getting called in, so when he can make those pop-ins and out of uniform and interact with students, I think that does a lot to.
And I can tell you, agreeing with what the secretary's saying, there is a lot of interactions that I have with students where they'll say, when I first started coming, they would be, ah, why are you here? Now I'll come in and they'll start to give me knuckles, hey, deputy Solo's here, so it is a relationship building thing. It absolutely is, and it is taking time, but it has also been an effort on both my part and the staff that is here, and I think it is an absolutely positive thing. I think the kids enjoy it. Again, they're, they're not so surprised to see me, you know. Again, they're, they're not so surprised to see me, you know, when I do show up. And then, if I am called, they don't know that they're...
They don't know that I have to say, "Right," instead of "ran," because they're like, "Oh, I found my perk."
And just, you know, she's got it absolutely on target. You know, this is something where the sheriff's position, so that really, in the past, a uniform deputy may have to get a call. And there was times when I was on the road, which I'm not on the road anymore. This is my job now. Ride, get IV here, and then, I mean, she's seen it, deputy's here, they have to go, because they've got to call somewhere else in the county. And again, this is the beauty of what the sheriff, you know, really, his concept of it was on target.
And I've tried to let the sheriff's department know that the schools are open to the sheriff. It doesn't have to be just solo. If there's someone on patrol going by one of our schools, I strongly encourage them to, you know, park in front of the school, come in and pop in. It's important that they know the lay of the land, especially here with new construction going on. I've always found it beneficial to have law enforcement just have an idea of what the landscape of the, of the school is, just in case. Hopefully, we never do, but if we ever had to have them come in, in kind of, kind of an emergency situation, they would know where in the building to go and how to get there. So I've always had an open-door policy for law enforcement, and will continue to.
And it does make my job that much easier. It really does. And when I report these, these back to my lieutenant or chief and sheriff, they're, you know, really grateful for this. Again, we, if it wasn't for their welcome mat, we would probably only be here when we were called or needed. But other than that, I mean, it's just a, it's a partnership that has been, you know, the concept of it has been great. And I think those of us who have been a part of it have really probably taken it to the next level. I think, you know, just my reports back to the sheriff and the chief, they've been very happy with what we've been having.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to say what I was going to say after your presentation. I'm glad I didn't, but oftentimes after presentations, you don't have to feel you need to sit here for the entire board meeting. I'm glad I didn't say that, because we may have more questions come up, but, but feel free to stay, but it's...
The staff has my information. Every time you need to reach me, they have a meeting on the floor, and you can reach me anytime. If you have questions about anything that you feel might, you know, obviously, any emergency call or dispatch, but if you've just got questions in general, you can reach out to Jen or Chris, and, you know, maybe touch me, and that's all, that's all, anything I can tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter.
Thank you.
Watch that cable.
Two there.
Yep.
There's two of these, Tom. At least two.
Yep.
So what I'm passing on is the current, the end of month, the month that closed a couple days ago, December. And then, another document that we're going to do later about the project, I've got one copy. Can you chuck one right over?
Chuck it in.
The next one of these.
Here.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. The current end of month, Jen and I just had a chance to review it together prior to this meeting, and we confirmed a lot of things we've been watching. But there's one big update to make, that a couple days before Christmas, we received the annual tuition increase for secondary students that we wait until the end of the year to get. Let me explain the process a little bit. The, we start school every year with our secondary students attending wherever they attend. Most of ours go to Lincoln Academy, but not all. And we don't know what that tuition's going to be, until now. So after four months of school, the state releases, Department of Education releases the current tuition rate. And we operate up until this point on last year's numbers for the invoices, and then it all gets reconciled and caught up. So when we budget, we don't know what the rate is that we're going to pay next following year. So, and we also have other variables, like students moving into town or moving out of town, et cetera. So we take some, our best guesses. Our historical increases have been around, they were around 6% for many years. Last year, we bumped it up to about 6.5%, because we saw that trend going up a little higher, as the state released tuition rates that took into consideration the inflation that had been happening. We saw increases in the EPS numbers that gave us the reason to budget for 6.5%. And when the, the tuition rates were released last week, or a couple weeks ago, they were about 6.5%. So our tuition numbers weren't too far off for what we had budgeted. However, when we went to, when I did my analysis here at the mid-year, when I get that tuition number, it seems like some, some kids moved to town between last year, when we budgeted and counted, and this year. And increase of about five students from the numbers we budgeted until now. And at 15,000 apiece, that's an increase of about $75,000 over what we estimated last year. But that's not the biggest thing that I'd share with you. The state changed its rules or its allowances around the insured value amount, that the private institutions that are allowed to receive local money, which is what Lincoln is, they have been charging us a figure of about 6% of the tuition for what they call insured value, which is to cover their facilities costs. They're not calculated in the EPS formula. This year, they increased that to 10%. So we estimated around $700 per student for insured value, and it's actually going to be, you know, close to 14, it's going to be 1,400. So an increase of about $700 per student. And with 90 students, you know, we're talking about a 60-something thousand dollar increase that we did not budget. So with a few new students moving to town, and with the increase in that, we're looking at the secondary costs being $125,000 over budget for tuition. And we also will see that, that increase translated, transferred to next year on the budget there. So we know this will be a big budget impact on secondary for next year, based on the fact that they can, they can now charge 10% of the tuition for the insured value. So that's something that we have to watch, because the way we're, way we're set up, when our secondary costs rise against our budget, it has to come out of the elementary school, because that's the only cost we've been paying. Now, I think the good news is that we can absorb all this, you know. Jen and I have been looking at it pretty closely. And, and we should be okay, given how we budgeted all the different cost centers. But we are in a position now where we've got hit by several things this year, including the fact that the teacher contract was negotiated after we budgeted, the support staff increases came after we budgeted, the tuition numbers came after we budgeted, the insured value was increased dramatically after we budgeted. So, so we have some hits coming at us. So as we work through the rest of the school year, Jen and I are going line by line through this thing every month, to make sure that we can continue to tell you that we should be able to absorb it all. Okay. The other piece of this that we've talked about every month is that while we show $200,000 in revenue for behavior students coming here in the budget, we're only really actually receiving about $100,000 of that. But again, we've offset that by unfilled tech positions and unused transportation costs for certain reasons. And we added the new bus, the fourth bus. But because we had $100,000 in transportation for some special ed things that didn't materialize yet, we don't think they will, we were able to absorb that as well. So we've taken a lot of hits, but because you built, Bristol has built a budget that is resilient in the face of things like this, and these challenges that we are definitely getting hit with, we're able to absorb. There has been a tradition of a pretty healthy, fun balance forward, because we budgeted that way and not gotten these kind of hits. But as the close of this year, I don't expect a generous fund balance forward. I expect that Jen and I will be watching this thing, you know, come down to a, a soft but delicate landing. So those are the numbers that I'm here recording.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, part two of that, I guess I gave all my great jokes, but I don't know if those were cheap sheets or not, no, they're not. As we look towards how these things transfer into next year, we, I've gone through, we have the budget ready for Tuesday's Budget Development Workshop, do a little bit more work on it, tweet now and then. But we have, there are no, perhaps none, but no significant changes in the actual staffing plan. But there is, based on the contracts that the school committee negotiated with the supports, with the teachers, and how that transfers to the other personnel in the school, there will be a 4.5% increase to all payroll lines. There's also a 1% increase for the family medical leave deduction that has to be taken out. Does a 5.5% increase to all payroll lines. And there's an 8% increase that we budget in here for all health insurance. And again, we don't find out what that is until the end of March, after this budget's already passed. But the 8% should cover the maximum amount that can go up. The increase in tuition costs plus additional students is going to be an increase of $260,000 in FY '26 over what we budgeted for this year. Part of that is the increase in tuition, a significant part of that is the increase in the insured value factor, and then five more students next year that we'll be budgeting for this past year. With the change of Great Sofia leaving the AOS, and the, and the four towns now, you know, kind of taking a greater share of the responsibility for that office, will be a $75,000 increase. We'll go after the budget passes, but I project it will be about a $75,000 increase in the assessment paid to the AOS for the administrative positions. We have added a fourth bus after we did the last budget, so we'll have to pay for the four buses, not three. And, and that, along with a, we'll let go of that $100,000 that we budgeted for sped unless something changes between now and past this budget. But then there's also a 15% increase in transportation costs. We received the bid from the, we received two bids, December 27th last week, we reviewed those. The lesser of the two bids is 15% more than we're currently paying this year. So the cost of the buses will increase from about $75,000 per bus to $86,000 per bus. So overall, transportation will increase $50,000. So I didn't put exact numbers down here for the staff, and the PFML and the health insurance, we're still calculating all that, and the new APF fund system now, and that's going well. But I didn't, there's so many components to that that we'll look at on Tuesday. But I, I think that, you know, from my assessment of that, that, all that's going to add up to about $350,000 in, in payroll increases. And you add the rest in, and we're looking at about a $750,000 jump in the budget, which is about 10% of your budget. So right now, as we head into Tuesday's Budget Development Workshop, we are going in there to get a handle on what is projected to be a 10% increase based on obligations already made.
Understood.
Peter, was that a $75,000 currently to an $86,000 per bus?
Correct. We currently pay 75.
Right.
76.
Projected, right.
75,000. It's going to run up to about 86,500. So it's 11,000 per bus will be the increase in the cost per run.
Right.
That's the 15%. But with the changes in the, in how, there's a lot of lines in there for special ed buses and different types of, sports buses and things like that. So in Jen, you know, it kind of looks at, it's going to be a 50,000.
Okay. Thank you.
We're not done yet. In, in the whole process, there's, I think that our biggest opportunity is to look at the special ed section, and Kelly will be joining us, I think, for a piece of Tuesday, and we're going, Jen and I are going to try to talk to her in advance of that. If we can find any way to kind of mitigate this a little bit, I think it would be in the special ed cost center. But I can't begin to, you know, I don't see it anywhere else, so I'll put it down. And we'll see if we can find it, if we'll see the special ed ones.
Is there any specific reason why we ended up with not getting the students? You were hoping maybe we would get the, the tuition students in the...
Yes. The special ed director determined that they were fine where they were in that school, did not need to be placed out of district based on the evaluations of those students.
So, within the AOS, the movement of students, you know, we've considered some situations that were not, they have to be, the IP team has to decide on how a school placement's appropriate. So the school itself has to not be able to use them. It's a part of that. And, you know, it's, it doesn't mean that Kelly's going to not get a phone call in two weeks. But the other challenge is, we haven't hired the position that's going to go. So it's the chicken and the egg. So I haven't had, we, we aren't staffed for that kid at the moment. If we get a kid who has a lot of news and can bear, we really need to bring another person on board. So you can spend any money and take it in. So that level of piece perhaps is the kind of difficult thing. You know, certainly the cost, but then it could be the same as a whole year to issue that, you know, at this point. There were some of those pieces that we, some situations have been considered and they didn't pan out, because the sendings, we wasn't able to keep each term because of that model or other factors.
Okay.
So, certainly something we'll talk about next week, is that how likely is it, you know, now that our special ed director can be in a situation without the two schools having usual programs anymore, you know, how, how, there's certainly a need, there's still a law around being able to send people out of their home school.
And everyone wants the, putting the fourth bus back in.
The people that attended the board meeting certainly helped.
Right. And it's being used, because when we, I think, first talked about eliminating one bus run, it was because there didn't seem to be a lot of ridership. And so...
There still isn't a lot.
Okay.
So our buses are not running at capacity?
No. I mean, I can, I'll try to gather some data for next week and just...
Because I, sometimes I've seen the buses, and they look starkly empty.
Part of our issue is about the amount of time that a number of kids.
Right.
Because of the mileage and the road nature of the roads, you have it. By the time the first kid gets on, actually gets off, you know, gets to school, by the time the last kid gets dropped off, is on blast. There's a number of factors.
We have a large route, right, our school covers...
The number of miles.
Eighty miles or something.
Altogether, it was some very large grid. I'm going to go with that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I think the government's saying, we ran through the, you find, you're pushing that one-hour run bus. And that one-hour run bus was one of the big things that we folks came in during September. That is, I think, one of the most compelling points, because that's too much time for a kindergarten or first grader to sit on a muscle.
Right. Yeah, I understand.
Thank you for coming.
It's why we're here. Any other questions? Okay. Facilities and maintenance report, what do you have?
I have ten other questions. Could you just confirm, we're starting at, what time we starting on Tuesday morning?
8:30, is my understanding.
Yep. Just want to make sure everybody in the room says the same thing. Thank you.
Right. Okay, so we should, somebody should...
Not really a lot for the board. We have only a few heating issues that come in all those sections as well. We have most of that split away now. Not really a lot for the board. Three phase heat pumps are all functional in the new spaces and are working quite well. When you come in from the outside, you step into the corridor, you notice it really late at that corner, and you're like, "Oh, geez." Probably different than you do.
Aren't there some of the worm spots on Holly?
Yes, not all. Probably a while after the fourth level, I would like to say that one of the things that I'd touch on was the sole being available to us exactly was a great, because with physical... Cause a great deal with physical security, the devil say, I helped him and that we make recommendations to the board or whoever else. Putting in cameras, locking systems and all that. He's been a great asset to us with that.
Any questions? No questions? Bristol, South Bristol Restructuring Committee. I'm on that and we haven't met and it's been tabled. What is it to be?
I can take it off. I'm gonna take it off.
I don't see it happening anytime soon unless you've got some information that I don't.
I can remove that. I'm gonna remove it right now.
Is there any old business instruction update?
Yep. We had a very detailed presentation last, at the December meeting. So if anybody wants to go online and see that, that's been posted. So only, you know, minimal stuff from that meeting, from the information at that meeting. But the front entry to the cafeteria, I've been told, is very cosmetically appealing. I didn't see it because I was ducking. I was in a hurry to get in here, so I have to get down in the daylight. It's staying light or what a minute a day now. Yep. And that'll provide obviously additional entrance space for opportunities or pathways for our citizens to get into the building. So that'll be something that'll be good moving forward. A lot of the stuff that people wouldn't see, the interior punch list stuff is getting completed. It's just stuff that's not highly visible, but it is getting done. So that's a good thing. The only thing that we're a little pushed back on is the four new classrooms and bathrooms. The hope had been that we would get into those in January, but because of, is a ripple effect, ripple, water, because of sprinkler system. There's, the delay in the sprinkler system has created a delay in those rooms being available to us. So the hope is right now that in February.
What's the delay on the sprink, was it the cistern?
Pots came in, was it pots came in late or something?
Yeah, the sprinkle pump came in late. It was ordered a little late. The constructors, the pump house, controller came in about three weeks after the pump was on. So you can't run it until the controller, right? So that is now onsite and they have prepped to get that into the pump house. A couple of pipe connections and fill in the system.
I would say as far as projects go, the delays have been minimal based on some projects I've been involved with.
Oh, yeah.
Here, so.
Okay.
So that's it for that.
And the.
And the budget development workshop, everyone knows that's on the seventh at 8:30. I didn't put an end time because I'm not sure how long it will take us, but we'll start at 8:30 at Central Office.
Is there any new business?
School board meeting dates.
Yes.
I had shared with the board at the last meeting that the, the way the schedule was set up is there was a front loading of meetings at the, at the beginning of the month, the first two weeks of the month. And it's really to get Peter out and we want Peter in meetings because there's a lot of stuff, especially now in this current situation. We find ourselves, you know, to have Kelly come, have Peter come three nights a week and stuff like that. It's challenging. It's challenging for me to do three meetings in a week. So what I, the proposal I had made and I put together a calendar is that we would make Tuesdays the designated board meeting night and we would have one a month. And I talked to Darren, Tuesday worked well for him, except for he has fire committee meetings, the first three. So it would mean that the fourth Tuesday of the month would become the Bristol School Board Meeting Month. Now, that's a long period of time between, from now to then. I understand that. But we are getting together for the budget meeting and we could always call a special board meeting if we had to, until we got under that cycle. But if there's no objection from the board, I'd like to move the Bristol meetings to the fourth Tuesday of the month. I'll send a, I'll send us, once I get it set with all the boards, excuse me, I will send out a, I'll send out an updated revised calendar. We'll get it posted so that community members know when the meetings.
So our next meeting would be.
It would be. The 25th of February. The good thing about this one though is fourth Tuesdays are never impacted by holidays or school vacations. So it's always gonna be the fourth Tuesday.
Unfortunately, I won't make it. That's okay.
You won't make any?
No, no, no. I'll make, I just won't make this one.
Oh, okay.
I'm scheduled not to be here, but that was based on.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does this require a vote of us to approve it?
I mean, you could. I don't think it technically has to because we change calendars, we change schedules all the time, but if you want them. And I, like I said, I'll get it posted so that everyone knows when it is. We're in the budget development process, so we may have to have more meetings anyways. I don't see us going from now until the 22nd, well, we know we're seeing each other on Tuesday. But like I said, if something comes up, we'll probably have to have other budget meetings and then we can always schedule a special meeting if we have to.
And when does the meeting with the budget committee?
Correct.
That's why it's on you.
Yep.
When does the town of Bristol's budget meeting fall this year?
Do we have that set?
Actually, I have the, that's the one town that I don't have.
I mean, give or take. It's usually the.
I thought that Darren said to Rachel in an email that we could do the 10th. I thought that's what he said. There were two dates.
It's usually Monday, it's, yep. It's usually Monday, Tuesday, I don't know which night we're given a choice to come soon.
10th will be Monday, the 11th will be a Tuesday. Tuesday 11th.
I'm sure that Monday, February 10th would work fine for a meeting with the budget committee. That's what Darren said on one of his, on the 20th.
Yep, it's actually, it's 10th, Monday the 10th and Tuesday the 11th. So he said, Darren said the school will be the task that we set.
That's what he said.
Okay.
Well, he said, I'm sure that would work.
Which would be good since I'll have moved the Nobleboro Board Meeting from that date onto a Tuesday, so Monday will be perfect.
In order to attend the town budget, the town budget committee, they asked them to vote and make a recommendation on the school budget. To go into the, you know, to the, into the public meeting. You have to pass this budget before then. You have to pass a budget so that the budget committee can vote to recommend. Because I'm, what I was gonna suggest is that if you do, we do the same thing that we're doing with the AOS. Having a short meeting before the public meeting to pass the transportation contract there. The, you could have this body meet half an hour before the budget committee so that they can actually have a budget they approved. Because I don't think you're gonna vote on it on Tuesday. Does that make sense? You could have tough worked that up later, but I just wanted to make sure we're registering. With the current schedule, you would not have voted to approve a budget before going to the budget.
If we waited till the end of February. Could we move it to March?
Move what to March?
And instead of the 25th of February, move, shift the calendar over to, to starting in March instead of February and get this budget stuff out of the way.
Yeah. I mean, there's nothing that says when we have to start it. I can say, I can say that with the other boards.
That would, that would allow all the budgeting things to happen.
Yeah, there's nothing, I'm just happy that you've agreed so far. Twenty-five percent of the boards have agreed to, to allow that switch to occur. But yeah, that's whenever we start, it's up to us.
Right. So it would be some, the last Tuesday in March, whichever Tuesday that is.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be March 25th.
Again?
Again.
Okay.
Don't wait, March, yeah. It was the 25th of February, 25th of March. I'll send out something that clarifies it for everybody so we're not getting confused. I'll get them all posted.
Very good.
Um, we had tuition rates on there, but Peter already covered that. And that future board topic, that just was a carryover from, that's the only thing we've had and that's previously discussed, so.
We have no executive.
We have no executive session. So are you making, are you?
This meeting is adjourned.
6:30 PM.